Six o'clock and call the meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance first. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which we stand. One, two, three, sing. Okay. Has everybody reviewed the agenda? Is there any changes? Nothing since you sent it out, right Stan?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Second?
Three.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Review of April 13th regular meeting. We'll do those minutes first. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was trying to move in the minutes. I don't know if you weren't able to hear me. Or not the minutes to the agenda.
Oh, you didn't approve it?
I was asking to make an addition.
You're not clear at all.
I was asking to make an addition to the agenda.
Okay. What was it?
Under executive session, town manager.
Okay.
Is everybody here in Ben okay?
I wasn't hearing that well.
I'm breaking up.
I didn't understand what he said.
I'll call one and see if that helps.
If people would shut their mics off unless they're talking, it might come through better. And I'll do the same thing.
Okay.
What was the revision?
So you want to make a motion to make in addition to the executive session adding town manager?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that? Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to the April 13th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 13th?
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The special select board meeting minutes from April 21st. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I have a couple things on there.
Okay.
I'd like to fix the word chair at the beginning. And I would also like to put in where Stan left the meeting. It says Stan left meeting at, but it didn't include his time.
So with those two changes, is there a motion to approve with the changes?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the April 22nd special select board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, open public comment. There's nobody else on, right Stan, that was gonna?
No, no, no general public, they were all invited.
All right. So we'll go on to the guests. So we have Rutland County Solid Waste District with Mark Shea and Carl. How do you say your last name Carl?
Deed Helm.
Deed Helm, okay. All right, so we'll have them go first.
Thank you, ma'am Chairman. She a lady. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here at the request of Carrie some time ago. Asked if we can chime in and join the board when it gets reorganized. And I said absolutely. We're here anytime you like. As a member in our district, we're at your service. Some of the things I'm thinking that you'd like to hear, it may not be, but I'd like to reach out to you perhaps. And if you need any questions answered or where the district is heading and how it's providing its service to Proctor. Any questions off the top of your head? I could think of some. I could think about the HHW, maybe green update, some of the things that are happening since COVID-19.
Okay.
And I can go into other things like social media and compost workshops where Kyle will talk more directly as an outreach person. Well, just like you, as a community and a town, we're a municipality also. And we follow in the same directions as the governor is indicated that we should. Keeping our staff safe, we're keeping our customers safe. Some of the things that you'll see at the transfer station include a distance policy. It includes wearing masks. It includes all those things that we need to be aware of to keep people safe. Some of the services have been reduced in response to the governor's in DEC's recommendation. And what is essential? Right now, what has been deemed essential is trash, recycling, and food waste. So this excludes things like electronic waste, HHW, in the batteries and the lights and stuff like that. Right now, we are not doing the HHW program until we get direction from the governor or that determination on when it would be safe. Our HHW program consisted, before all this happened, it consisted of 32 events within 17 weeks. And you're probably asking me, how can I make that up? And how could I get out to all the towns? And you know, the thing is, I don't have the answer because I don't know the date I could start. If, if, if we start, say, June 6th, the first Saturday of June, and we go to the end of October, what I said I had 17 weeks, this will give me 20 weeks. So we'll see what happens. I don't want to make a prediction when this is going to start. Or say, hey, how about this idea? They come back and say, hey, how about another one? And you could do that to the council. I want to deal with real dates. This time, I'm not worried. We can, if it were to happen in June, in June sometime, we just make it all happen. We'll kind of move the dates a little bit further out. And you know, if and when this happens, I'd be reaching out to the managers or in my committee members to see if these dates would work. I know almost every town has particular events lining up with their HHW program. And I know you have, I've been working with Stan closely on this frustrating way of life that we're in these days. And I think, I don't think there's a manager out there that hasn't felt some sort of angst on a daily basis. It's not the same old way. It's something different all the time and it's constantly changing. So in efforts to kind of slow things down and try to think this through instead of jumping to conclusions, I think we're going to be okay. So as time goes by, you know, I'll keep you up to date. You'll be one of the first people to know what's happening in the managers. Next, next, actually this Thursday with the district managers association, which is like the, not like the managers association for town managers, but we deal with solid waste. We meet on Thursdays ever since this thing happened. And we're going to be meeting hopefully with the person that's heading up the green update. In the past, you know, being the new guy here, I don't have all the absolute details on how the district dealt with every little town. But I do know when I was in a member town, the district did assist us. And I want to find out what that's happening. The idea of them opening up, I think it's May 15th or something like that. No, May 30th. I wonder if that's a real date? I don't know. And I'll find out more next Thursday. Hearing it's a real date. Hearing that, you know, if it is, we're going to be ready if we can. We were lucky to have a dumpster ready and have someone sponsor it. So how cool is that? We're just going to wait for that time to happen. And to not to, not to get off HHW too much. One of the things that, to do these programs, it involves a lot of scheduling and a lot of state authorization and permits to do these things, to reach out to all the towns. And our staff have to receive annual training also. This has been going on without a glitch. We've been doing it remotely with those who certify us such that we can keep up to speed on all what we need to do, keep safe, and follow all those federal regulations and state regulations. And it's all good.
Mark, can I ask a couple questions of you?
Absolutely.
So just so we can clarify for residents in town, can you explain a couple things? Like explain if you are or are not taking big items? And explain the $10 permit and what that allows? What that's for? And how the fees are associated with that $10?
Yep, exactly. And just, just like you indicated in your last meeting with your board, which was really nice, you kind of dovetailed. A lot of the stuff that you mentioned is up on our website. When you talk about recycling, when you talk about using our station. We do, we do ask that you have a, especially those that have a, that are, that are in the district, we ask that you get a permit. It's only $10. And with that, you get a good price. For a bag of trash, it's $2, under 30 pounds. For over 30 pounds, it's, it's $4. The whole, you know, there's a whole bunch of products that we offer. You can go from whatever. But all those prices are up on the website. You'll see the recycling area website in district. You'll see out of district. You'll see HHW in district, out of district. You'll see prices for residences in commercials. There's four type of permits. Residents in district, out of district. Actually, yeah. And we got commercial in district and out of district. In district, it's a certificate. I should, I'm not going to quantify it, but they get a much better deal because you are, we are members. If you don't have a permit, or you don't show your permit when you come up, it's going to be expensive. It's going to be a little bit more. And if you only use it for once or twice a year, maybe it wouldn't be worth you getting a permit to spend $10. Maybe it's a one-time thing and that's good. It's going to be a little bit more. These prices are all, they're not extremely high. We're not here to make a profit, but we do have to cover our operational expenses and keep costs down to member towns to the minimum. Other things that you'll see when you go up there, we'll ask you to pre-sort your plastics. We're going to have, I'll talk about that in a minute. If you could pre-sort your plastics, all your number ones, all your P, number two colored plastics and so forth like that beforehand. So if you were to come up there, you'll have your buckets or your little bins or little bags and you just throw it into number one, throw it into number two. Throw your cardboard over here, throw your paper over there. You could be in and out of there in a relatively quicker way. In, not so much quicker, but a more focused way where you're able to know where things are and know how close you are when you come to another person. We ask that you follow social, or I say physical distancing. I like to keep people 10 feet apart if possible. We've drawn lines or grids up there in recycling so people could have a better idea on what this distance really is to protect themselves and to protect the employees. We're asking that you bring cash or checks. Some kind of exact change if you can, so we don't have to pass that back and forth. And this is all toward COVID-19. We're trying to minimize the risk to the customers and to the staff. We also have up there that we're asking that if you can, come during the week. Typically Saturdays is much busier. And sometimes there's a wait period. We've reduced the amount of parking spots where you could enter to recycling, so you won't violate that 10-foot rule. We ask that, say if you go out on the catwalk to throw trash into the dumpster, that you don't have two people on there. And that person can go do that safely, then come back and go back in his vehicle. If you had three people out there, or even two people out there, that would not abide by the 10-foot rule or 6-foot rule, whatever you say. We ask that if you're organized and you're prepared, you don't have the large crowds. And to think about it, I think we won't have any problems at all. And I know people get busy and they, they want to get up there, they have their process. Usually those people, their process becomes better. And it's amazing how they have, they open up the back of the truck and they have like the six bags and boom, boom, boom. One, two bags on this side going over where the paper, the small paper and cardboard is. And you can be out of there in a relatively short period of time. Minimizing the exposure and so forth like that. We ask that if you're sick and coughing and hacking, please don't come up there. You should be resting. So with the idea of only the bare essentials and being a little bit more mindful of when you come up and you're in a public area, I think, I think it's going to be better. And that's what we've been doing ever since this has been happening. We have our employees wear gloves, we have masks. We ask that our customers wear protective gear too. I've instructed our staff not to handle the material. And this is, this goes to many levels. If you were to ask our insurance company, are they handling the materials? Well, that's going to increase your workers comp or whatever. Right now, transfer station employees, when it comes to workers' compensation, are ranked the highest that you can rank it, which is equal to a policeman and a firefighter. Those are the three classes in transfer station attendant. These are the highest insurance risk people that you have. But also on the COVID-19 segment, it, there's, there's studies out there that you hear. And there's so many different types of studies that if you touch this material, this virus can stay on this material this long and that virus can stay on this virus this long. And you know, if they just don't handle it, it's safer. Let's see. Yes, to keep it in contact, I'm going to let Kyle talk about that a little bit more. But I want to talk about some of the future things that we're looking into doing as time goes by and all this stuff will pass, I believe. I don't think we'll be, I don't think we're going to be able to minimize or eliminate the social distancing too soon, no matter how much we open up. But we're going to keep our eye open to it. And one of the things we're looking into is to get some better signage up there to help people pre-sort their recycles before they even get there. There's still a few people that have problems. They don't come frequently enough and they don't know what this little thing goes into. And you get a whole line of buckets that you're going to get into. We only let one person in a line, so that's their line, so they can do their little thing. And then when they get out, someone else can come in it. So I'm thinking that this is going to happen within the next couple of weeks. We'll look into maybe into credit cards as a, as an extra choice that someone can use. I don't, you know, if it's only a $2 bag, maybe a credit card wouldn't be the best choice. We're looking to do this as a system of where the district doesn't have to take the added expense and pass that on to the towns. We're looking that the customer would need to do that as a transaction of trash. And I, I don't think it's going to be a big expense, but it's going to be a little token price. That would help eliminate the idea of passing cash back and forth. I think I covered the, the biggest thing, I think, is it, is overall, is, I don't know if everyone's received, let's see. I brought to Stan when the book came out with our annual report. Has everyone received one of these? Well, would you like one, I should say?
I think I put them all on the table.
Bud?
I think I put them on the table at one of the full board meetings.
Cool, awesome.
Question mark. The biggest question that I have is kitchen waste. Specifically as it relates to our contract with Casella for curbside. What is going to happen with kitchen waste? Or is that going to be Carl?
Excellent, excellent question. Some of the things that I'm hearing from the legislature, this is, you go back maybe a month ago. It was an initiative from Casella. Another, another interest groups to delay this process. Right now, the state of Vermont has been, over the last eight years to 148, has been having like each year, each few more years, a little bit more. They're asking from the towns and the districts to perfect the way we save the world. Do, doing the right thing with trash and recycling and making markets for that. Casella requested to delay the idea of waste for a while. And then I heard that they wanted to do it during the COVID-19 emergency declaration. And so this went to committee and there's been no action. There's been no discussion with, with any of the committees on this. So as far as I know, and this has been something that's been steadfast even since, even before the new year came forth. There were no discussions of any interest groups talking about delaying that July 1st mandate to divert it from the landfill. Right now, it's still illegal to knowingly throw food waste into your bags. So thinking about the signage that we're going to be doing, we're going to be putting some of that signage where you throw trash out. So it can aid people make better decisions according to the law. I don't think we're going to go through any, any bags, no. But we're going to, we're going to help people mitigate best practices. So with that said, how would that affect the workflow in Proctor? Right now, Casella has, they get all, some pretty good contracts on commercial entities like supermarkets and so forth like that, restaurants. And I think that they probably have it cornered in this area. And so if, if, if it's a determination that July 1st continues and there's no deviation in the legislature, they'll have to do that. So right now, the district office, if you go up to the website, we do have disposal things. It's a nice little bin. It's almost like, you know, a beach pail. It's square, it's sturdy plastic, it has a cover over it. If you were to put this in an average freezer, you can probably take, put it way in back and freeze it if you, if you wanted to. And it'd be fine. We're selling that, we're offering that to district, member districts for whatever we paid for it. So we're getting no profit on that. And if you call up Greg, I mean Kyle, going in much more detail about some of the other stuff that we sell. But I think I covered everything. Does that answer your question, Stan?
I think the question is going to be what Casella is going to charge us to pick up. They're going to be required to have a pot beside the road along with the recycle and the trash?
I think so.
No, actually, they aren't. So for, the requirement is for food scrap collection to be offered to commercial entities, businesses, as well as four or more residential units. They are not required to offer to individual households. And as for the cost, that'll be up to you to work out with your contract. You're not actually required to offer that to your residents either. The options are for them technically backyard composting or the transfer station, which could be ours since yours isn't accessible every week. So those are basically the options. Does that answer it?
Yeah, I think your question you answered was a single family resident, they're not going to leave a bucket beside your door and you've got to get rid of it the best way you can get rid of it.
They're not required to, they may provide that option.
Okay, we need to negotiate probably a modification to our contract if the board wants to provide it for all of our residents.
Correct.
Does anybody else have any more questions from either Carl or Mark?
Sign up for our social media and newsletter to get all the current information, if you would. I strongly recommend that you do.
Is there anything you guys wanted to add before?
No, thanks for inviting.
Yeah, I might add a couple of quick things. Yeah, so you can sign up for those on our front page of our website. It's very readily accessible there. And then as for providing the options to residents for composting options, we are going to have a work, several virtual workshops. We've been planning in-person workshops, but those aren't happening currently. So the first one is scheduled Monday, May, or sorry, Sunday, May 17th at 1:00 PM. And I will definitely be sending out more information on those as they come closer. So definitely encourage folks to do that. It'll be for anyone who hasn't had any experience in composting and just, yeah, outlining those options for diverting food scraps from the trash. We're also partnering with several other towns on providing backyard compost bins for residents. Also at cost. So if there is any interest in selling those at maybe your town office, which might not be open, or a library, at some point, we would love to happily deliver them and work out an agreement for residents to purchase those. And that's everything I have. Thanks for having us.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you for all the details.
Yes, thank you.
All right. You're welcome to stay and listen to us if you'd like.
Time to go home.
All right, thank you both.
Take care, everyone. Take care.
Okay, Eric Mallett, you still with us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
All right, technology's working. Well, thanks for taking some time to hear me out tonight, folks. I'm going to keep my video off, my feed keeps going in and out. I don't want to bore you with it, trying to keep connecting. So what I want to talk about tonight briefly, just introduce this idea of perhaps exploring the opportunity to have a conversation with folks driving through town about the use of their engine brakes. If you're unfamiliar with where my house is located, I'm 114 South Street, which is as your, it's your first house on the right when you're arriving kind of into the village from the south to the house recently painted blue. It's on the, on the southern edge of the property is where the second of two 25 mile per hour sign appears.
That house looks great.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, it was a bold color choice, but somebody convinced me so. So a problem I've had, and it seems to have grown recently. I don't know if truck traffic has increased or what it is, but we've had a real we've had a, a, a real spat of, of trucks going by. And perhaps because of the, the real decline in the speed right through there from 50 to 25, from town, from state highway to town highway. When they roar past my house, they're engaging the engine brake, which at times I swear is going to shake glasses out of my cupboards. So I introduced this idea to Stan and I spoke, I emailed Bruce and Stan a couple of times and they reached out and I appreciated it. They reached out to Rutland County Sheriff's Department, who finally responded pointing out that the agency of transportation doesn't place engine brake restriction signs on state highways. Um, and he went on to sort of defend that position, I suppose, by including language from the Vermont Commercial Driver's License Manual, supporting the position specifically, he made mention of section 2.6.6, which reads use of, use the braking effect of the engine as the principal way of controlling your speed on downgrades. Now, here's the challenge with that particular conversation. My home is four miles north of Business Route 4. It's another seven tenths of a mile to the first downgrade up by the library. In other words, Route 3 is nearly completely level for almost five miles. So really any conversation about controlling speed on downgrades, at least on this section of, of town highway really is irrelevant. It's, I'm not saying it's, it's paper flat, but it's, it's pretty darn flat from Route 3 all the way up, from the turn onto Route 3 all the way up to the library. I did some research. I looked through the 2017 zoning regulations on the Proctor, Vermont website. The word noise appears eight times in, in the zoning regulations um, in reference to what it is that we as community members are expected to do in terms of maintaining reasonable volume levels. It would seem to me like we would expect the same from those that are passing through. A quick Google search of municipalities that have placed mention on their road signs of an ordinance in town, in their town about no use of engine brake. Just a quick Google search, not really searching that hard. The towns of Woodstock, Sandgate, Bennington, New Fane, Berry, and sort of most interestingly, Montpelier. I thought that was interesting considering AOT doesn't like to place them on state highways. It is in our town, in our state capital. That's a quick Google search of towns that have ordinances passed and signs posted. Several towns that have not adopted ordinances banning engine brakes outright have opted for signs that say something more like, please refrain from non-emergency use of engine brakes within village limits. I think the theory behind that being if there was risk potential, if an accident was imminent, I'm pretty sure that a sign stuck to a a piece of metal on the side of the road probably wouldn't stop the truck driver from activating his or her engine brake. So I guess what I'm asking for really is, I don't know if we, if the town has to go as far as passing an ordinance. That might be much to, to ask at this point. Maybe the route to really take here is just to place a sign that says, please refrain from non-emergency use. I'll be honest with you folks, if that stopped just one truck a week and meant that I was able to sleep through the night because they didn't slam on their engine brake at 2:00 AM and shakes me out of bed, I would chalk that up as a great big win. So, you know, we place, don't walk on the grass signs places when we plant grass seed. There's no legal bearing to those whatsoever. It's simply a courtesy or just saying, folks, hey, please don't do this. I think all I'm asking for here is the same thing. Just a little bit of courtesy. Post a sign that says, please refrain from non-emergency use of your engine brake. And see what happens. Maybe we have to explore it later and there can be some sort of a, an ordinance passed, but at this time I'm just asking as a community member who's tired of being woken up at odd hours by what sounds like a blender taking off on my front lawn, I would, I would appreciate it. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I guess I could.
Can I just say, can I just say something?
Yeah.
Cause I did check into this too as well and I, I, an ordinance, you're not going to be able to do an ordinance, I don't believe, because it is mandated by the agency of transportation. However, kind of going back to your idea about the sign, you know, with grass being on the grass, you can place signs up just to deter people and hope that it will stop them. You know, the sign will maybe make people more aware that they shouldn't be doing this. But you basically can put a sign up, but you can't enforce it. So they can still put their brakes on and there's nothing we can do about it. But I think if you place the signs, you know, in hopes that at least half of the truckers, you know, slow down ahead of time or realize that they shouldn't be using their brakes in that specific area.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking for. Like I said, I'm, I'm completely fine. If an ordinance is unable to be passed, maybe all the towns that have ordinances, maybe those passed prior to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if the necessary ordinances are not like we, I know in the city of Rutland, they've placed them places and they put the signs there so people would slow down. But if they don't, they like please, the sheriffs or the police, city police can't pull them over.
Okay.
Can't enforce that part of it.
Like I said, I, I, I don't really care if an ordinance is passed or not. And frankly, if, even if there wasn't ordinance passed, given the fact that I watch cars speed by my house at probably 40 to 50 miles per hour every day anyway, and speed is enforceable, if we're unable to enforce that, I'm pretty sure we're going to be unable to enforce engine brakes. So for that reason alone, and I'm not trying to be cheeky, I'm really not, for that reason alone, I don't care if an ordinance is passed. If there's just a sign up that says, hey, can you think twice before doing that? Like you said, if it stops just half of them,
Right.
I will chalk that up as a great big win.
I mean, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I think it's something we consider. Is anybody else in disagreement or?
I'm kind of in disagreement. I think there, there's a couple of other options. I think that for the most part, it's probably one certain company. So we could give a phone call and we could make them aware. We could also maybe place the signage a little further out and change the 25 mile speed limit to where that first warning sign is and place that warning sign maybe a little further out. So that maybe it gives a little more, you know, it's 25. And those are my only two thoughts on it. I know a lot of people do not heed that first 25 warning and they do it right there at the 25 miles. I mean, it's like slam on the brake. Even regular cars do it. So those are my two thoughts.
Anybody else?
The only thing I would say as far as the speed limit is we only control to the line where it says, uh, thruway begins here, which is I think where the 25 mile an hour sign is. The state controls there. We can ask the state to extend it out, but we can't do it with our own regulations.
Tom, are you going to say something?
I think.
Tom?
Lawrence and Brandon both use the, uh, please refrain from engine brake signs and they've had some luck with those. And I think that's a cheap way to start.
I guess I would be interested as to how much the sign is going to be. And if we're only putting it in one spot.
Many of our signs that we buy are in the, uh, 50 to $100 range. So they're, they're not expensive. If you wish to, if the board, you know, wishes to put it up, we can put it up.
And how many signs would we be talking? Because if you're talking about the town, then you're talking about all points of entry and exit.
Right, I would suggest, uh,
Go ahead, Tom.
You know, I would suggest on both ends of town, because both ends go from, uh, you know, highway speed right down to 25 and then at the top of East Street Hill. That certainly, uh, they certainly use their engine brakes there. And, and that's only a 25, and they're only doing 25 miles an hour there. So that'd be three signs.
Right. And I, I mean, I, they use them behind my house too. They use them in a lot of places in town. So if you're talking about every entry, you're talking about what? Five signs?
I think.
What truck, what large truck with engine brakes are allowed on residential streets, Carrie?
What are you talking about residential streets? Lawrence Road is right behind my house.
Right, that's restricted from large trucks.
Yeah, that doesn't matter. They're there.
So we had these signs up before and the town took them down.
We posted them. We posted them. I was involved in that. We posted them on state highway both. That was why they took them down. We have to put them on our own posts.
So do we have those still?
They were posted by.
What were you saying, Lisa?
It was, it was posted by the Frenchies and it was posted as you came into town on the south side. They were taken down because we are told they are unenforceable.
Which they are.
They are unenforceable.
I hate to keep belaboring the fact here, but like I said, a very simple Google research. And you've all driven on roads in Vermont that have these signs up. We're not looking at asking anything that a lot of other municipalities already have. So I, I would hesitate to let history be a, a, some sort of dictation here. It sounds like somebody said that maybe before they were placed in a area that wasn't permitted.
No.
Okay, so do you want to table this?
Hold on, I, I'd like to just clear the record here. So he says correct, you're saying no. So which is it? Cause I, I think that the minutes need to reflect it accurately and not juxtaposed.
She said if I'm, she said that they were posted someplace that wasn't proper. They were, they shouldn't have been posted because they were on state posts.
Right, right.
So if they were posted, they'd have to be posted someplace in town.
Correct.
And again, I think it's only that, you know, what recognizing if we were to put signs up at the entrances of town, it's only basically to warn people that really don't use your brakes or try not to use your brakes. And we can't do anything beyond that as far as enforcing it.
Right.
So, I mean, do, do you want to table this and have it at the next meeting we have? Or do you want to think about it? I mean, what's everybody's thoughts on?
Stan, can you get a scout estimate on the sign so that we know what price we're talking about?
No question. I can have that within a few days. I, I would suggest three, three, one at each end of the town and one on East Street at the top of the hill.
Oh my God.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Why would you want one at the top of East Street?
Just a steep hill, that's all going down, going north.
I was talking, I thought you meant going up. Okay, so coming down. They should be able to use their brakes there. I mean, that's a decline, you know?
Well, again, we're just saying please.
They're only doing 25 miles an hour at the top. Well, they're, they're doing less than that. They're leaving the stop sign. They shouldn't even be doing 25 miles an hour by the time they start down the hill. I really don't think they need to run their engine brakes all the way down the hill.
Okay, so Stan, you look into the signs and the cost?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Anything else, Eric?
Uh, no, that covers, again, I really appreciate it, folks. I, I know there's so much other crazier stuff going on in the world. It seems probably kind of crazy if you're talking about engine brakes, but I, I really appreciate you, you hearing me and I'm, I'm not trying to be a squeaky wheel. I just want to be able to get through, like I said, even just a couple extra nights sleep would be, would be cool.
That's fine. It's good to talk about something else once in a while.
No kidding. Well, everybody hang safe and, uh, thanks again.
All right. Thank you.
Bye now.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. Good stuff. Anybody have good stuff? Since we've ventured out into the world? Well, I think things are kind of hopefully, um, with all the extra addendums that are coming in place and stuff through the state that eventually we'll get back to normalcy, hopefully by summertime maybe. So, um, I think everybody's kind of doing their part and trying to keep, you know, safe and healthy and six feet apart. So I was down Beaver Pond this week and there were a lot of people there. So, but everyone was actually apart. So that was good. So. All right. So let's go to the highway department. Stan? Can't hear you. No sound.
There we go. Carl and Paul came back to work on Monday. And, uh, their tasks are cleaning up plow damage, sweeping streets. And we've had a couple of interruptions because of digging on North Street for pipes. So everybody was involved in those two types of efforts. Now John is, yeah, working, doing road checks and, uh, as I noted, he put up the Gorham Bridge High Water, which was hard to believe that we had high water, but, uh, it was backed up in Pittsburgh. So we put the signs up. Uh, again, most of it is just cleanup type work, getting back in, getting the equipment mothballed for the winter, for the summer. Our sanders and plows and painting and cleaning them up. So.
So Stan, if someone has a concern about their properties, because the plow did plow it up, just contact.
You can call me and then I relay it to John or they can call John direct.
Reached out to me, but it was like, they're not here right now. They're out of state and they were told their yard was dug up, but I went by and it, it doesn't look it. So it's down here on North Street too. So I don't know. I'll take a better look just to see, but it didn't look bad at all.
You know, it's, it's a fine, it's a fine line between what we anticipate the homeowner cleaning up their own front yard versus a strip of, uh, lawn that we plowed up about six feet long. That's, that's an easy one.
Right, right. Okay.
But, uh, and they're supposed to be working on the worst ones as they go. Uh, so it's, it's getting back, trying to catch up on last two weeks is the big issue.
Thank you. Anything else you wanted to add or no?
No, not for highway.
All right. So is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
As the water department is concerned, uh, very little unusual activity going on. Uh, the crew has been working on sewer issues rather than water. Uh, one thing that it doesn't affect us, but other towns, uh, the state has put a mandatory, uh, disinfection rule into place for everybody, even those that are on wells that didn't have to do it before. We've always been adding a trace of chlorine right along, even though we're on a well. So it doesn't change our operations. There are some new testing requirements that are coming through, uh, which will cost us a little bit more, more money. But, uh, we'd have nothing we can do but abide by whatever the permits are. As far as Contract Six, uh, Beldon is working. Uh, you got, I forwarded the daily reports from, uh, the inspector. And he's doing, he's doing a good job of reporting what's going on.
Yes.
Beldon, I guess, you know, from what I didn't, wasn't aware that they were, had broke a couple sewer services, but uh, they will be repaired.
Anything else? Anybody else have anything? Okay, is there a motion to go out of water and into sewage?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, the big, the big news of course is the sewer plug on, uh, Meadow Street. You've all seen the photos of that. Uh, we did get the report from the insurance coverage that they will cover it. However, I'm not, what level, I'm not sure. Uh, they are going to lost claim that was submitted today was a cost. And it's about $25,000. That's for personal items. That's for personal items, so I don't know what, how far they're going to go. There is no question that they will cover our losses on that one, except for the deductible. As they deem are appropriate, so we're not sure what's going on. Uh, the big issue on that is the tenant who was forced to move out because of it and the owner trying to decide what he's going to do. Uh, makes a question mark going on. Uh, the tenant has found a, an apartment over on Garden Street. The only question is the first month's rent and the security deposit, which is $2,400 that she doesn't have. I asked a question to the insurance company, the league, as to whether, if we advanced her the money, whether they would repay it when the settlement was made. I do feel sorry for her and would like to suggest that we advance her the money with the idea of some contract that guarantees repayment at some point. She has tried to retain her, she paid her monthly rent for May and she was trying to get it back. She has also been trying to get her security on the trailer back. And the owner has not been favorable to that idea so far. He still hasn't made a decision whether he is going to keep it on site or whether he's going to take it off. So that's up in the air. I guess my question is on May 1, the tenant needs some money to get an apartment. And I'm not sure whether the Proctor is the right place to ask for in advance knowing that at some point it will be settled and that we would get it back, maybe from her when she got her retain, or her deposit back from her current landlord or something on the rent, but I haven't, I don't know what the answers to are. All I know is that she is in dire straits right now.
Has she gone to Community Concerns Council?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So I would direct her to Mike Knowles.
Okay.
And that's exactly what that organization is set up to do.
Thank you Lisa, because I didn't, I didn't even think about that one. I will contact Mike. And is that something that you indicated they would be receptive to?
I believe they would. That, that's the, that's the impetus for that organization is to help residents in Proctor, not to sustain, um, over time, but to help in times of need. And so I think this clearly falls within those parameters. So if I were you, I would just reach out to Mike and kind of give him a little, um, background information. And then maybe if it's okay with her to provide her contact information to Mike.
Okay, will do.
Anything else Stan?
That's all I've got for sewage.
Okay.
Other than that, we did repair two breaks on North Street. Uh, that, uh, we found as we were jetting it out. And the other part is that there will be a little more aggressive cleanup program on some of the streets and finding more areas. It's interesting to note that that particular sewer line that caused the damages on the replacement list for our Willow Street pump station project. So we knew we had a bad site. It never had been TVed. We were getting large water infiltration coming in from that line. But we knew we were getting water, but we didn't know we had a plug in it. And I think you all understand that there were two plugs. They couldn't clear the first one from the manhole right in front of the trailer. So they went up on the hill and came down the hill, and that's when they found the second plug. And that's when the damage occurred, is when that one broke loose. It let a whole bunch of water uh, down through and it hit the plug down by the trailer. And then it backed it up in the trailer. Uh, some of you may have noticed the water running down North Street last week. We thought we had a water line break. We didn't have a water line break. We had sewage coming up through the pavement because of the blockage on North Street.
Wow.
That has been cleared up. We thought we were going to be digging for a water line and we weren't. We were digging for a sewer line.
Alright, can I have a motion to go out of sewage and back into the regular meeting?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Standing committee reports. Is there anything that anybody has on? Any committee report? Nobody's been meeting, have they?
Rollin County Solid Waste District, but I don't have to make any committee report because it's reported.
And I know the, um, rink and pool are going to try to get together this week to meet to talk about the pool and what it looks like in terms of moving forward and if it's going to open or what's going to happen, so. Nothing else from anybody?
Nope.
Okay, uh, so the bills? Stan, you included those?
You've got them in front of you somewhere. I've got a number for Lisa that wrote, wrote on a piece of paper. But I haven't found it again yet, so I'm going to have to do it over again. I'll, I'll email you the number Lisa.
For total? Alright, and I'll stop in and sign them?
Yep, right upstairs.
Okay. Hey.
Are we, are we going to stop at the Town Clerk's office and sign them?
You authorized Judy to sign them last time.
Great.
If you all want to sign them, they're, you know, you can all come in one at a time and do it.
Not necessarily, I'm not, I don't think, I'm not.
Okay, Green Up Day?
Okay, I am off mute. So, Green Up Day? Jim and I got an email. We did respond back. They are still talking about doing it May 30th. We had to submit to them some kind of plan. Uh, because probably social distancing would still be in effect. So I did submit a semi-plan that said that we would leave bags and a map and maybe a sign-off sheet of places to, for people to just pick up a bag and check off, hey, I'm going to go green up this street or these two streets. And leave it at that. No other word has come down yet as, as far as anything else. They were acceptable to that Green Up Day idea. And they are asking that people, of course, wear gloves and a mask to green up, so that would be included in the announcement for Green Up Day if it continues to move forward, which I see it as moving forward.
You could definitely move it.
It, it'll just be a different Green Up Day than we usually have.
I feel like there's a lot more litter out there because people are driving around getting fast food and throwing it out the window and their beer cans are being thrown out the window because everyone's driving around instead of composters, so.
I think there's more too, because I think the town highway crew has been off for a couple weeks and they're, they're very good about picking up garbage on the side of the road. And there are lots of residents too that pick it up during the year. I do know that. And I appreciate that.
Alright, that's good. Alright, animal control. Dan, did you want to address that with the, uh?
Just my comment is only on Sergeant Carter's response that he had talked to the dog owners. I still don't know whether it is a puppy or a full-sized dog as far as registration, because normally we don't ask for registrations until they're six months old. Uh, so I'm not sure of that one. Other than that, I think he was rather emphatic that they've been warned.
Okay, uh, if it's, oh, okay, so it's the one on the end of the street, right?
It's the one that we are working on right now, yeah.
So I went by, I took a walk the other night and I walked down there and I did see a dog outside and he was definitely big. He's not a puppy.
Not a puppy.
But he was big and he was outside by himself, but I didn't see him go off the property, so.
There are three of them on this street actually. And this one in particular is, doesn't come up to my end. I have my own too. Um, so I guess, I had an extensive email with Carter about it and how to go about things and then I also read our, our town ordinance, which I really would like to work on a little bit, because there's some things in here that are I think that could be tweaked. Um, but in our town ordinance, there is no need for a statement of any kind for a dog that is a nuisance. It doesn't say that at all. Only a vicious dog needs a written statement. So I said to Carter, okay, so they've been warned, now what? And because I said, I think it's ridiculous for it to be, you have to catch them for anything to happen. I said, you know, I have, I do not have a dog poop tree in my yard, but I certainly have dog poop. And I have dogs in my yard barking at me, so I can totally understand how other people are having the same issue. Uh, so I think it's I feel that a lot of it has to do with the sheriff doesn't really want to do animal control. Which I'm sure they don't. Um, it's the, it is not a priority for them. So it brings me back to Animal Control Officer. I'm just, I'm not too pleased with how it goes and, and the lack of respect by certain dog owners gives everybody a bad, a bad feeling.
Anybody else have any comments, or? I mean, I think we could like revisit the ordinance again and look at that. I don't know, you know, I just don't know about providing an animal control person or how, how to really do that without spending money and also it'd be very limited, I would think, that they'd have to be like here. I mean, I know the situation occurs a lot, but not, it's not like a, you know, eight-hour day kind of controlling.
Correct, but I think it's really kind of ridiculous that they can get warned and the very next day, the dog's running loose. I mean, nothing happens.
Right, well, he's supposed to be, aren't they supposed to be ticketed the second?
They are, and our ordinance doesn't say how much the ticket is, how much the second fence is, so I'd really like to redo the ordinance. Maybe not in May, maybe we look at it at the end of May. I also bought myself the, um, book from the league, which has a lot of good direction in it. And their new ordinance in there is quite different from our ordinance that was last done in 2013. So I think a good starting point would be, let's rework the ordinance at the end of the month. And then keep moving on with this, because I think that residents have a true this is a true complaint. I mean, on Sunday alone, there were two other loose dogs in Proctor. It's one thing if your dog is loose and you go get the dog. Everybody gets that, but then there's these certain dogs in Proctor that just are loose. Like, open the door, go to the bathroom where you want. Kind of thing.
So do you want to put it on like the second meeting of May to discuss the animal control ordinance?
I would. And, and I would even go so far as I can make some suggestions as to some worrying that we could change. I would even do that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
I will send you a word document of the ordinance.
Okay.
Deal with it that way rather than.
Right.
Okay, thank you. The, the engine brake ordinance.
That was just on there in case you didn't take any action before.
Okay. Perfect. Um, park and rec committee appointments.
Back in March when we did the appointments, I forgot, two people, Greg and Megan, were up for renewal this year. They're two-year terms. And I would suggest that, uh, they be reappointed to the rec committee for two more years.
Is there a motion to appoint them both?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second. I'll, everybody's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Um, municipal plan hearing date.
Do we want to try to set one, or are we going to? I mean, I just put in May 23rd because that's the earliest we can possibly do it.
I think we should wait and see what happens. Because if there, we're still social distancing, then we're going to have to make arrangements for that.
Granted.
Yeah.
But if the if the planning commission's hearing was any indication of what we would have for participation, there was none.
Right.
So it'd be the select board members looking at it and coming up with their own, any of their own suggestions.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe we could still have it on the 23rd, um, unless something well, then you could, you'd have to cancel it like within a week's time.
Right, I'm just trying to save us from having to continue to advertise it. So if we just wait until then, we only have to advertise it once. If we advertise it now, we have to cancel it, then we're going to have to advertise it again.
So can we table this Stan, until after May 18th to see what the governor decides?
We, we can table it, there's, the only impact is the uh, plan, the current plan expires in June. So we're ending up with a document that is not approved, which means it could affect some activities.
Right.
Not, not, but a lot of the grant programs ask for your municipal, a current municipal plan. And this is the only one, you know, the only issue that I would be worried about. I'm not worried about the actual town's operation without a plan, because I don't think it'll make much difference.
So how about if, um, after the 18th of May, if everything is kind of, um, relaxed a little and we know that, we can just push it forward to the nearest date possible?
Yeah.
That work?
I think, you know, I agree with Carrie that no big rush in doing it. I just, my, my rush is just keeping it in front of you that something has to be done.
Is everybody okay with that?
Stan, would you mind picking with the Regional Planning Commission to make sure our grant is, uh, going to be okay with the extension? That's my only concern. This was paid for by a grant.
The last conversation I had with Amanda was that all of the invoicing has been done. Uh, and it, all it has to do is a final report and the cost to the state, which is the full $7,000 that you got. So the work is done, it's just that it has not been approved. Does that affect the grant? I think Tom, I do need to check on that. Yes.
Okay, thanks Tom. Herbicides in town property.
Tom asked me, Tom asked me to put that on the agenda.
I did, just with everything on, uh, the TV lawyers there, I'm a little nervous. Um, on, on second thought, a day later, I know John sometimes does use herbicides for the poison parts that belong guardrails to keep his people out of it, so maybe we should not include the highway department in that.
But to my knowledge, we have never used herbicides, or I'm not aware of it. He has. We've used the weed whackers. Because we're not certified people to apply chemicals.
Exactly, yeah.
I, I didn't, I didn't remember if we had hired some contractors as the state does.
No, we haven't.
No. Okay.
The state goes overboard. If you look at their state highways, when they put it down, they kill everything under the guardrails. And they've had some problems with erosion because they've taken out the root mass that's been holding the soil together. Uh, that's something we did talk about last summer. And John was discouraging me of using it. And also was kind of unsavable to get it done.
Good, good. So I I'd just like not to see, if John does need it, then I don't think we need it at the, you know, the pool or the skating rink or the ball fields or the cemeteries or anything like that.
We don't use it at the ball field and we never have.
Okay. Mosquito spraying.
The only reason I put it in was I remembered that last year we did a mass mailing to all of the residents of Proctor of these two. And the only question I had to the board is whether they felt it was necessary. We've had one call from one individual who saw it on the website and was looking into it. And I think the district is accepting his no spray request with no problem, but whether there are other people who have forgotten last year and are interested. So it's posted at the various places in town. It's on the website. Question is, do you want to do more?
Anybody have any thoughts?
I think, I don't think we need to do anymore. I think most people are familiar with the the district spraying and what have you. So I, I don't know if it's worth spending the money to send a mailing out.
I don't think so either.
Any thoughts? Want to not do a mailing then? Just where it's noticed now? Is everybody okay with that?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with it. Yeah. This is a policy decision that I don't want to get in the middle of. I figured I'd throw it on your table and let you say the no.
Okay. Hey. Select Board email addresses.
They are all set up. They're all passworded. I'm afraid I held off on putting them out to you, waiting for our Chromebooks and, see Carrie, I still don't know where they are. I haven't, I haven't checked this week. But I knew, did talk with with Pat Curtis when he was in because he gave us a quote for the new Chromebooks instead of the refurbished ones. And he told me 16 weeks delivery on that one, so I'm not looking too excited about getting them tomorrow or the next day.
You know, we ordered supplies from the city, for the city, of people who were working remotely. And there was like one item, and I don't know if it was a printer or some, a larger object that is backordered until like the middle of June. And then, and things just took forever to even to be shipped. It was just like, oh, no, it's being shipped. No, no, it's not. It's not being, you know? And I think a lot of places are using other outside resources to deliver, so I think that could be part of the problem.
Yeah, I can distribute the email addresses. And mine is up and operating and I've got two items on my screen for email. One is the new one and one is the old one. And I'm slowly going to move into the new one, but I don't want to do it until everybody else is ready to do it too.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of lack of supply, so, you know?
I think you should contact them and at least get an idea. Usually they'll tell you it's an idea. Every time I've contacted them, they're either like, it's a week or, oh, we're shipping that out today. Sometimes they just kind of forget.
This is a telephone contact?
You're right. They'll, if you put in your phone number, they'll call you back. Like within 10 minutes. If you get on Amazon and you put in your contact, they'll call, they'll call you.
Okay.
You can talk to a person.
All right, thanks, Stan. Let's see, tax sale property bids.
We had one bid that reached the two properties.
Yep.
$6,700 for 60 West Street and $2,300 for 50 Chatterton Park. $2,300, yep. My idea is to let them go and hopefully get them back on the tax rolls as producing properties.
I agree.
Yes.
So if there was a motion to accept both of these, we would start the notice. And as you remember, we need to do a 30-day notice to all the taxpayers that who may wish to circulate a petition that we don't sell. This is in the specs and Tommy knows that we can't transfer title until the 30 days are up.
Is there a motion to
Motion to move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Town office.
You've got the official off, grant offer agreement. I assume that everybody has read the 572 pages that were attached to it. I might suggest that you turn to the last page and move a motion to accept the agreement.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? Somebody wants to Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And if anybody has any questions on all of these, I can provide you with the answers to them in about two months.
Okay.
Thanks, Stan. Okay.
At least all, this has to be signed by everybody, so I will put a copy downstairs and if somebody can come in and sign them, we go from there. But I'll fill in the blanks and go, go on that basis.
Are you putting it on the door or is it going to be inside?
Well, I was going to leave it inside if you promised to knock and let whoever run away so you can have a place to sign it. Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Stan. So do you want to, did you want to do the town manager search now or just wait till executive session?
I'd like to wait till executive session, I think.
Okay.
I think the only thing that you might comment on is that the committee is active or the select board is active in doing it. You've had two meetings. There's something under that item. It is going through and your executive session later tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, budget reports.
You've got them. I really have nothing to say. I told you, I think the last one is I, the first of April, I did a quick projection indicated to myself that I felt we would end up the year in the black. Revenues, which is the new page that I've been putting out, looks like we will be close to meeting our revenue goals without too much effort. The big, the big one is, is the back taxes that we collected as part of the sale of properties.
So Stan, do you think we should, and I don't know waiting till after the 18th, but once this kind of changes its direction towards the COVID, that we actually take a real good look at the budget to see where there's possibilities of how do we repair it and where can we make those changes if we need to? If it becomes, you know, blatantly red rather than black?
And can we know where we're at as far as where the taxes are? Where we're standing, how many are paid, how many are not. I don't need names, but a percent of this is how much we had this year and this is how much we got last year, just so we have a good idea.
We, we can refine that and put a little bit more data as to what I think the end of the year is going to look like based on revenue and expenses.
Yeah.
But as far as, I I have an aversion against changing numbers on a budget. I prefer to see red there to know that when we're going through the next time, do we need to look a little deeper into an item or not?
Right. And I don't mean changing figures. I'm more like, okay, we're really red here. Where can we dip into, you know, like, what's our fallback, you know? And I think, like Carrie said, having a, you know, a little more detail as to, you know, where those big holes are going to be. Anything else on that? Anybody?
No.
Sheriff Department report? Do they have any questions or concerns about it?
Nothing, but I can see that people have been isolated a little too long.
Hopefully it won't get worse because it gets better. All right, let's see.
You know, I I do post these on the website and I've only had one person in the last six months call me about one of the items on here.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm interested about the the truck on Eden Avenue. I'm like, where is it? Maybe it's my truck and I didn't know I had one. It's just gone? I don't know.
What was that?
There's a truck on Eden Avenue, possible truck stolen. I'm like, what? Where?
Is there anything else? Anybody wants to add all the new business before we go into executive session?
Yes, I was just curious. Stan, where's the bike path stand?
Right now, the preliminary conceptual plans have been sent to the reviewer at the state. I had my shot at some comments. New Boys and King, where our project managers had some shots. They responded to those. The big question that comes up or has come up is whether we remove the railroad ties or whether we leave them in place. And the engineer who's doing the design had the idea of removing them, except that it was going to be an expensive proposition to my comment was fill over the top of them. The state's comment back after they got their hands on it was it would end up with a washboard in a number of years. This is the paved portion of the path on the top of the railroad ties. So they are saying the railroad ties have that's an additional expense which wasn't included in the overall plan. The other concept was the width of it. It's a 10-foot wide pan, path. The paved portion would be 10 foot wide from the park to North Street. The question, the conceptual design had a 10-foot wide gravel path from North Street up to the town line or next to Proctor Gas's chain link fence. And then reducing it to eight feet because there was going to be a lot of ledge removal in that area. The suggestion I made was to make the whole gravel section eight foot wide instead of 10 foot wide. And the state's response to that comment was, look at our design handbook. The design handbook says somebody does, but it may be something in there, so. But what I'm looking for now is to get a conceptual plan that we can talk to the property owners for easements and get their right-of-way section into work.
So we're not looking at construction this summer then?
No, well, it was, it's, it's planned for 2022. It's not going to be this summer. It'll be bid next summer and it'd be in the 2022 budget. And the town would need to do a bond issue to cover the local share of the project. Again, we're only getting 80% funding, so there is some money that the town is going to have to provide. And I would assume that that would go to a bond. Originally, I was hoping that would be something that could be done and dovetail it with the presidential election in November. But with the slowdown of various entities, it may not happen that quickly.
All right, thank you. One other thing, the ditch line for the new streetlights. Is that a road crew project?
No, that's supposed to be a contractor project. I talked with John late last week. And he had talked with the contractor and they're supposed to come in and clean it up. It's just a matter of waiting.
Can't hear you, Stan.
It's the contractor's responsibility to come in and put down topsoil, grass seed and get it done.
That would be LaFaso?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the thing I added that you may not picked up on was that John had talked with them last fall about when they were going to get it done. So they are aware, a matter of probably giving them a reminder. I did get an email from Caris Reels with the same question.
I have a
Okay.
question. I just wondered if there's any updates on the zoning administrator?
We have one other person who has shown some interest in it, does not live in Proctor, goes to another town. I forwarded that information along to the planning, to the, to Dick Horner, but have not chased it. Again, the select board is waiting for a recommendation from the planning commission. The two avenues that we were looking at as far as professional quote-unquote zoning administrators fell through, this is the third one that has come about.
Okay, thank you.
The planning commission hasn't been meeting.
Did they plan a meeting soon, like even by phone or?
There, there is a meeting scheduled for this coming month. I I don't know what will happen.
All right. Does anybody have anything else? Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'm going to call Alan and invite him to join us.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.